You're gonna mess up the pledge.
Like us working in refrigerated conditions.
Apparently, they've got a surplus.
I mean, you don't have to do anything. Sixty-three.
Hey, John, how are you?
Got you set the two, but it'll stay.
And if it gets.
Somebody crank it down to sixty-seven.
Need to print out?
That's a clear. You see, I'll try. Might be a wing day.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to address the public and remind you that public comments are always welcome, and I invite you to sign up if you wish to speak tonight. I will recognize those signed up during the citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. Citizens who wish to speak to council but neglect to sign up in advance may be permitted to address the council during citizens remarks and comments agenda item, but only at the discretion of the mayor. When speaking to the city council asks that the following guidelines be followed. Once recognized to speak, please come forward and stand at the podium. And for the record, please state your name and if you are a resident of the city of Lexington. If you want to be contacted after the meeting, please provide your contact information to the clerk. Please make your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage the audience. Please be brief, state your position and provide facts. Please provide written statements and or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for you to share your thoughts and ideas with your city council. And please speak clearly as we certainly want to hear what you have to say. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and individuals may not yield their allotted time to another person. If you represent a group, five minutes are allotted and you are invited to identify the other members of your group who are in attendance. The council or mayor may allow exceptions to these guidelines at their discretion. I remind us all that the meetings of the Lexington City Council are formal proceedings and are recorded. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. And the first item of business, if you all will please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda, consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any additions or corrections unless there is an objection from council. We will approve the agenda as presented. It is approved. Next item we show as presentations, but actually we call on Councilman Ziegler to make a motion as we look to formally appoint our clerk.
I make a motion to appoint Kate Beard as the clerk for Lexington City Council.
Second, have a motion in a second. Any discussion besides the city manager's gleeful joy of having Kate as clerk? Hearing none, ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Betts?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next item, I'd like to call on Mr. Alli Good for a Maury Service Authority update. Welcome, Mr. Alli Good. Thank you for bringing a bodyguard this evening.
Charles Alli Good and want to introduce my co-MSA Lexington board member that you probably haven't seen very much of because I've generally been the one giving the reports, Mary Beth Manjerovic. And she and I serve on the MSA board together. And so we're a good team. And so from now on, one of us will be here when it becomes report time for MSA reports. Not necessarily me, but she's going to gain some experience as well. And I know she's looking forward to it there. And there to do that. And so for tonight, the it's all about the money, isn't it? That's what we've always been talking about there. The the MSA is fortunate, we received a principal forgiveness of almost $5 million towards one of our projects. It was actually about 4.5658 million dollars there. And so this particular project has to do with the solids handling and the study that's associated with that for what to do with the solids that are produced at the MSA waste treatment plant. And so the the actual loan amount, and it's going to be a low interest loan for this first phase is $240,000. So you can see we got lucky, got really lucky when it came to getting the 4.6 million dollars towards that. So but, you know, there's, there's always a but, right? And the but is we're looking for the rest of the 15 million for that particular project. And so we're still on the hunt for it and have several leads on and several good prospects for tapping into that difference, but can't report on any success tonight other than the principal forgiveness, which is a large chunk of change, no doubt about it. The the about some of the operational things, as you may recall, one of the items that I've been preaching and focusing on as a member of the MSA board since I became a member of the board has been a preventive maintenance program at the MSA plant. And to that extent, in trying to keep ahead of the maintenance issues that come about just because things wear out, MSA had purchased the the original drives for for the oxidation ditch were the original ones. And so you know, they're getting ready to timeout. So they hadn't broken yet. And there so we placed our order timely and it was like six months delivery when you do it. And so six months, more than six months ago, we placed the order and the stuff arrived. And the the mechanical drives were swapped out and started failing the new ones. And so all the new ones that we ended up ordering and installing have been removed and sent back to be reordered, I guess we would say, to get a new supply. And manufacturer acknowledged that there were issues, not MSA's fault, anything. And so so that means there's no redundancy at this time at the plant because everything is in use or sent back for repair and replacement there. And so we're living on the edge again during this interim time there, and we have our fingers crossed that the ones that we have now are not going to be short-lived as well, but fingers crossed, we'll see. But everything is working fine now.
Right.
And so to go with that, the we had some mechanical drives on the on the oxidation dish, and those are the ones I'm talking about. The the infield water tank, that large green water tank on infield, a few months ago, there was, I think there was a lightning storm and it affected the electronic control that keeps track of the water level in that tank failed. And so there was a false reading that the tank was full when it was actually empty. And there it became, it became critical. And not only was it happening then, what accelerated the emptying factor was there were multiple major water leaks in the city system. It was back when it was cold weather there. And we came close to running out of water in that tank. So to address the level control or not, the system now has been installed with redundant controls. And so we have two ways to read. So one fails, one still should be working there to do it. And the alarms have been linked into phones. You can get things coming across your phone now with the alarm system there. So that's installed and operational, which should help us all there. The 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 back on the variable drives, one of the things that's happening with the variable drives also is that the connection between it and the existing electronics in the plant isn't working 100%. You know, it's always something that you don't plan on that happens. And so we're jumping through hoops right now to try to work that out in dealing with the manufacturer and the programming that goes with that. It goes with these PLCs, these programmable logic controllers that are connected to that. The 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 MSA plant distributed spread on fields, 450,000 gallons of bio solids back in June. And we're still passing the EPA, the the state water water quality and land application standards. And so we're, we're above the standards. In other words, we're easily at this point, meeting the requirements that are imposed on us by the state. The Route 11 Waterline Improvement Project, the contract has been signed. And so that is, I want to say it's about $3 million contract. And that progress, that construction actually should start in September to October, last of September, first of October. So that's moving ahead. That's already budgeted. And we have an ongoing study that I mentioned previously about the bio solids, on which way is the better way to handle bio solids, whether to land apply it or whether to put it in the landfill, dry it and put it in the landfill. And so the decision has not been made yet on that. And that's a several hundred thousand dollar contract as well for for checking that out. And that that project is right now about 2.4,000, 2.4,000 for alone for doing the engineering work on that. The the, let's see, Jason, oh, and one last thing is the MSA in this modernization that we all know about, the water treatment plant requires ultimately moving the water intake that takes water from the river. Right now it's subject to flooding. I mean, it's flooded numerous times in there. And so one of the items that's on the list to happen, and we've received money for that, Senator Warner back when I would say over a year ago came to hand a check to us in there. And that was, the county was principal in in working the details out on that. But one of the, one of the problems that we ran into was where to put it? The the new water intake plant there. Well, things have a way of working out. The property that's immediately adjacent to this called the McNamara property to the MSA plant, water plant on Osage Lane became available. And the MSA board authorized the MSA to buy it. And so the sale hasn't closed yet, but it's like scheduled for the 14th of this month so soon. And there that'll help smooth away for some of the problems that were going to cost some extra money to deal with. But now that it just costs for the land now, right, to do that? You still have to do the construction for the other things. And so those are some new things that you don't know about in there. And so this is, you know, things are moving ahead for the MSA. And there. So any questions?
The equipment that was sent back, when, when do you expect the replacement equipment for?
Unknown. Unknown, unknown. In there. And they assure us that we're on top of
Hopefully that.
The list in there because the unexpected, I mean, it's called manufactured by surprise too, the failures in there because you know, they didn't make it planning on that. But in in our case, every single one that came, every single one, plan on that one. You know, and you're trying to stay ahead and it's preventing maintenance game and you end up what's, what's the idea? One step ahead, two steps back, maybe kind of stuff in there to do that. So that's we don't know, but they're on order. And we keep checking to do what we can to make sure we're on top of whatever list we're talking about here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Charles, could you go over the opening numbers that you were talking about? I don't the 5 million forgiveness.
Yeah, I'll give you the exact number. The principal forgiveness, exact number.
But it's.
I gave you a rounded number.
No, no, that's all right. But it's forgiveness towards what?
In there and $4,589,000 principal forgiveness and $241,000 low interest loan that funds the solids handling and storage rehabilitation project.
Is that part of the improvement to the plant in the future?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They're tied in. All of these projects are tied into the previously
Okay.
stated projects. There, there were several projects that we staged them out, we stretched them out at five years, then five to 10 years in that phase, and then 10 to 15. This is in zero to five. This is in the first group. This is one of the projects in the first group.
When do you all expect to complete that project related to the that facility?
Next year. It hasn't started yet in there. The the engineering, I think, has just been wrapped up in there to do that, but they haven't been approved. But the money has been that part.
Step in the right direction.
So that was a big plus.
Yeah. The big step forward. Any other questions from council? Now, Ms. Charlie, good. Thank you for joining us this evening. And Mary Beth, Ms. Charlie, good. Thank you for representing the citizens of Lexington on the Maury Service Authority and being good stewards of the the finances and the capital and the projects to make sure that we have clean, productive water in our community.
Well, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance for Article 13 signs and Article 20 definitions of the zoning ordinance. Welcome, Arnie.
Good evening to you all. We do have two public hearings for this evening for zoning text amendments. The first one is for canopy signs. And just to quickly run through that and please ask me questions as they come up. Perhaps to direct your attention to page six of your overall packet. We have a property owner downtown. They wish to have a type of sign that we currently don't allow in historic district. And the bottom photograph there of the ramble, that was their inspiration. And the desired sign, as you see on the top photograph, would be over top of the canopy. Mind you that our Robert E. Lee portion has already been covered over. So that's no longer there as a lit sort of background. So that it would just be a canopy with individual letters that are internally illuminated. And is that internally illuminated is what we really don't allow currently. But that is the desire of the owner and the owner has an agent. And we've been working on a proposed text amendment that we have before you today. I would ask that you look over on page seven and in particular in that chart that you have there, that table. So the number of signs are internally illuminated as you come across. So for internally illuminated signs, right now they are not permitted except for one neon window sign, not more than three square feet. And that's something we added in that 2016, 2017 update to the zoning ordinance. So this is another internally illuminated sign. It's not currently allowed. So therefore there's a request for an amendment to the sign article of our zoning chapter. And if we can go on and flip over to the next page, if you will, page eight. What's in red, obviously, is the proposed new language. So we've split up canopy and awning into two different lines. So a canopy sign would be allowed, letters not more than 10 inches in height, and an overall square footage of not more than five square feet. So not a very big sign. And that would be a maximum of 20 feet above grade level. We sort of cheated a little bit there in the sense that other signs are not allowed more than 15 feet. But because of the state theater and the way the land falls off there at the right edge of that sign, we thought we might should add a little bit more. And admittedly didn't get out the tape measure to make sure that that works. But further over, if they did it in the middle of the sign, I'm hoping they'd be okay. So that is the proposal. And then in the internally illuminated portion, just adding in one canopy sign. So potentially, if you have a canopy on your building, you would be allowed to have an internally illuminated individual letters that are no more than 10 inches high and five square feet total. Since that was a request for the C1 zoning district, which is your downtown historic preservation district, we thought we'd also extend that with slightly larger letters and overall size requirement to the C2 zoning district. And again, or not again, but that is out East Nelson Street, Kroger area on down and from the fire station on South Main on down to the hotel. We also amend, had to amend the definitions. So on page 10, we had this sort of awning canopy sign under the same definition. So that had to be split. And we now have a new definition for awning sign and a new definition for canopy sign. We also have new little graphics that Kate was able to find to sort of illustrate those two. In the older illustrations that you have at the bottom of the page with the red line, those are the old ones, which would be deleted if the proposal goes forward. On the next page, which I think is page 11 of your overall packet, just to show you sort of existing conditions, we took a walk downtown. Well, I was surprised because I didn't quite realize how many canopy signs, particularly Nico's, that I really didn't realize. So if this goes forward, then where would apply specifically? It would obviously apply to the gin, to the state theater. Those two are on that page. And over on page 12, Nico's, again, I didn't realize that they had a canopy. And the bottom photo there is an approval that John Adamson has been granted by the ARB for a new storefront coming in off of Washington Street side. Because as you know, you go in the grand building, you have those funny half levels. And if you go down a half level, that meets up with grade coming in from Washington as you go sort of downhill. And he has asked for and been approved for that canopy on that new storefront. Additional photographs on the next page of the Dutch Inn and also the Stop Inn. Those are relevant because those affected our definition. So we didn't really, because the Dutch Inn has a sign, I'm sorry, a roof with a slope. It's not flat up there. So you really can't consider it to be a canopy. And the Stop Inn does have a flat portion, but we didn't think it would be terribly appropriate there. And that is one really strange roof. Didn't realize how strange it was until we took the photograph. So to go back to the definition, just as an example, for canopy on page 10. So a canopy sign would be a sign placed directly on or attached to the surface or top of a canopy. A canopy sign cannot be attached to an awning, marquee, vehicle, fueling station, canopy, or pitched roof structure. And those last two are obviously because of the conditions that we have with Stop Inn with the Dutch Inn. We did hold because of my past failure to bring the lighted neon signs to the ARB for review in 2016, 2017. And I was, that was, was told about that. I'll put it that way. So at this time, we did take this particular sign proposal that So at this time, we did take this particular sign proposal that would impact clearly the downtown historic district um, to the ARB for their review. And you'll see the minutes on page 15, they were not supportive. And similarly, when this went to the planning commission, they were not supportive of the proposal. That's all I have for a presentation. Happy answering questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Uh, Ms. Strong.
When, when y'all went through and, um, did these design guidelines, particularly like say the five square feet for the canopy sign, was that based on what their proposal was? It wasn't really looking at other localities ordinance or anything like that?
They were, had a particular style of sign, particular size that they were. So we just took that number and certainly didn't want to increase it any because this is a new type of sign and didn't want to expand that to 10 square feet or anything. So no, it was from their proposal specifically.
Okay. And, and I missed the planning commission meeting. I did listen to it. So it sounded like they had some concerns. And then some of it was that maybe the ordinance needed to be looked at a little more closely, like not including the lumens for the the sign since, since it could be a really bright sign and we try to as much as possible promote, um, dark skies and downlighting.
You have the ability to put some timing on this if you like, have some additional controls. I'm a little bit hesitant with lumens, um, because I don't have a lumen meter and I don't know how to accurately necessarily control that. Um, there is perhaps some just overall, um, purview of the zoning administrator to say that that's too bright and have them turn it down if it's a type of sign that can actually be dimmed a little bit.
Yeah.
But yes, there was some concern certainly about the brightness and how long these might be, um, lighted. Because it is a hotel, so they actually have 24 hour operations. So, you know, I can't say only, because we have some other ones, if I remember correctly, that had say only during the hours of operation can you have this sign illuminated. I think that's for the neon sign, but the hotel is really in business all the time.
Right. And that's a good point too, that do you want to limit the hours of operation? Granted, you want it most of the night, but doesn't need to be on past midnight. Um, that kind of thing. And I, I can tell you from, well, let me ask you this. Do you know if this sign can be dimmed at all?
The applicant will have to answer that. I can imagine that an LED sign, there's a lot of control over those with colors and dimming. So I would imagine that you can. But I haven't really investigated that and will let the applicant.
Okay. I, I only mentioned that because when, when we did Widel, there we had some lights on the outside that we thought were going to be down, downlights, but they weren't there out and it was a low wattage, but shockingly bright to the point the neighbors were complaining and they had a legitimate reason to complain. So.
For what it's worth, it's only a five foot, you know.
Right.
So I can't imagine that these things are cranking out a lot of lumens, but I don't really know.
Well, this was a little light fixture that did. That's why, you know, I, I understand.
Best intention.
Conversation, yeah, what the concern is with that.
I had a couple of questions. Um, do we currently? So the, the top sign is the canopy and then the, and then the sign. Um, and then the bottom sign is the awning. If it like, is that right?
Uh, which page are you on?
On page.
In the definitions or?
Six.
You're actually looking at a picture, Nick?
Yeah.
That, that shows the gin and then the Robert E. Lee.
Okay.
So the, the gin piece is, would be
Canopy.
Canopy sign.
The way we have this, if you can just ignore the Robert E. Lee portion because that's gone. So the canopy is the structure.
Okay.
So the canopy sign or the letters, the way we've defined canopy sign are the actual individual letters that are internally illuminated that get somehow attached to the top of the canopy.
Is canopy and awning, um, are they interchangeable or is there a difference?
Well, they, they're, they were, as far as signs go. So if you look over on page 10, we had, and I'm not sure if this is answering your question because I'm focusing on signs now. And I think your question may actually be about canopy separate from awning. But an awning sign is a sign placed directly on or attached to the surface of an awning. Whereas I mentioned just a second ago, a canopy sign are individual letters that are set and attached to the top of the canopy.
What is, is, would the southern inside fall into either one of those?
No.
Okay.
That's just a leftover oddity of a thing that we don't currently have anymore as far as approvals.
Okay. So are we, and this is, I was a little confused. Are we talking about allowing or not allowing awning and canopy signs or just?
Awning signs would stay and there's more additional languages in the standards. As an example, in downtown, the awning signs can only be six inch lettering. So typically they're on the valence portion, not on the angled portion, but that little valence that's vertical. And there, if there's a maximum of six inches, I don't think there's a maximum sort of overall size on those. You know, square footage, but and you've seen it on the pet store had them on, on that balance. So six inch letters. So there is a difference between that awning and a canopy sign. Yes. And both would be allowed if this proposal goes forward.
All right. Thank you.
When discussing and establishing the size, like the five foot sign, whatever. Um, was there any consideration for the size of the building?
The applicant made the proposal. And I'll, I'll let them answer if in their proposal, did they take that into account? Um, but if it's a, if the five square foot is applied regardless of the size of the gin hotel, where as the proposal stands, we're doing, take that five square feet and potentially apply it to smaller buildings. I'm not sure if that helps you answer your question about the intent.
So if, when, when the, um, standards were discussed by I guess ARB.
And planning.
And, and planning, um, and talking about a five foot sign. Wondering if they took into consideration whether a five foot sign is going to be appropriate for a building that has lots of stories or it's much wider than a storefront.
We had that conversation, I know with the applicant, but I don't recall that specifically coming up with the ARB and or, and or with planning commission. But that particular building is difficult. And I mean, the gin hotel, because yes, you have a large structure, but sort of that base or podium, they only have a small, relatively small entranceway. And then those two retail spaces on this side and two. So there's a lot of signage already in that area. Not necessarily for the hotel. So then how do you craft something that allows additional signage for the hotel? But doesn't take away from what's already there with all the additional signage for those other users. So it, it's not a typically easy, um, ordinance amendment to craft.
And I was thinking in terms of establishing an ordinance and future, uh, businesses who may need to comply with that and wondering if the sizes of their buildings, uh, would maybe not necessarily match the size of a sign.
I'll answer that perhaps another way. I'm not, one, I'm not too terribly concerned about five square feet because that's a relatively small size. Particularly for a building as big as that. But we do have other rules and regulations for signage based on, as an example, if I remember correctly, that if you have a 30 foot or less facade or your frontage of your building is 30 feet or less, then you get a nine square foot hanging sign.
Okay.
But if it's more than that, then you get a 15 square foot sign. So we do have regulations based on overall frontage. But what's hard to apply here is their frontage for the hotel itself is fairly small.
Okay.
Even though the building is quite tall.
Massive. Yeah.
Thank you.
Arnie, could you summarize the ARB, um, objections or arguments for not doing it or doing it?
Well, hopefully those are well, um, covered in the minutes. But as I recall, one of them was we, if we allow this, then how do we, on another canopy, how do we say no once we've said yes? So there was a consistency. And then there was also, uh, in a compatibility or a perceived incompatibility of this newer lighted style sign in a historic district. I think those are the two major ones that I recall.
Arnie, are they still well below the overall 30 square feet of signage for the building, even if they add this five square feet?
You know, I'd have to go back and check. I did not do that math. Um, but they have relatively, because if I remember.
Many signs.
The only thing that's left on the canopy is hotel on either end of the canopy. And I can't remember if there's anything else. You know, the restaurant, I think, has signage and I take that back. The restaurant no longer has signage, but the hotel specific, I'm not sure that they have anything above what's attached to the ends of the canopy.
Yeah, I think maybe just some window decals, but not much. So that's, I figured they were well below, but.
Yeah.
Arnie, if the name of the property was anything greater than the gin, which is six letters, would five, would the, would the square footage be difficult to work with?
Smaller letters.
Right. That's, that's kind of what I mean. Yeah. So yes. Okay. So, I mean, I, I think of our, I mean, you know, the gin, the property is, is, is a part of downtown. It's now, it's an iconic building on Main Street. We have other iconic stores in Lexington. One, doesn't matter where the store is, but pumpkin seeds is a part of the fabric. But if pumpkin seeds wanted to do this, I don't know how many letters there are in the word pumpkin seeds, but I mean, that would be, the letters would have to be very, very small. Am I right? I mean, so in a, in a way, am I correct that the size of this will limit the, um, you know, the desirability of other businesses to potentially do it. Um, and I do recognize that this is a hotel that people will arrive after dark. We want them to find it on their first try going down Main Street because if you don't, you've got to figure out how to go back around our one-way streets. Um, and when people are traveling, they like to get there the first time. Um, so I mean, I'm inclined to a, assist a business, attract their customers uh, and have a goal of, of, of doing that. Um, as I look at other businesses downtown, we, we we, we've tried to get creative with, with signage, the way that the, you know, our, our signs that are, that hang off the wrought iron uh, hangers, but then we can, we let them illuminate them such. I mean, we, uh, we do allow neon open signs that one might say there is nothing more incompatible with a historic Main Street than neon signs that might blink or say open or, or something at all hours of the day. But I don't think we can imagine the palms without neon signs. So I mean, I, 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 I want to try to be, uh, open and, and supportive. I think and from my point of view, that, that the gin property is going to do this in a, in the right way, a tasteful way that's attractive, that complements Main Street, that complements their property and the other businesses around it. I think we all, all take, have the concern, and maybe this was some of the concern of the ARB, that where does it go from, from here? And so i- if we, if we allow it and it's by, you know, if it's in the zoning code and people can do it, what what happens when there is a sign and everyone's like, ooh, that's not what we thought might happen. And that doesn't, it's incompatible with downtown. So I do recognize those concerns. So I'd like to work in a direction of, um, of helping a business thrive on our Main Street that, uh, 15 years ago, we all wanted to be on Main Street. You know, I mean, that, that this, this is, this is, this is what we've always wanted, the, that building, that, that hotel to thrive. And if the owners, I, I'm not a hotel owner. They think that this sign will help. I want to, I personally would like to, uh, get there and be pro-business and, and assist. Uh, that's my, my thoughts.
Ask, I keep asking questions, sorry. But going, switching now to C2, because this ordinance, even though we're really just talking about this one sign and C1, it, it does include C2. So right now in C2, we allow internally lit signs with, with no real requirement over that, other than the other overall, uh, square footage limitation.
Correct. Um, if you go to page nine, as you're seeing the internally illuminated, it's permitted. And there's no overall square footage or height necessarily, but it still has to be one of those other types of signs. And therefore it's still going to have some control over. It's not just.
Right. But right now we allow, you can put it as long as you keep under the overall maximum.
Correct.
Um, and, and so like the sheet sign, that is already a canopy. It looks really nice actually. Uh, um, so I, I sort of wonder why in C2 do we even need to regulate it? You know, now we're saying the canopy sign has to be a certain size. I, I, it's just those little details that I think need a second look, but, but that's something you can either answer now or think about.
I'll, I'll answer it this way in that when this proposal came forward, it was certainly only for C1. So we only wanted to make adjustments for canopy signs to allow these specific illuminated, internally illuminated individual letters. And because I noticed while we were going through that process, that sheets already had one with I, not the applicant. I just thought, well, let's go ahead and apply it. If it's good enough, if it's appropriate in a really historic area, then perhaps it's appropriate also in C2. But I now see your point. And perhaps it's not needed to call it out specifically because we already have allowance for internally illuminated.
Perhaps a factor could be utilized in saying that if you operate a 24-hour a day business, then this is more justifiable to have with a, with an established set of standards.
Okay.
Arnie, uh, other than, um, not recommending, did the ARB or the planning commission have an alternative proposal?
Not that I recall. In other words, it was a reaction to the proposal that was in front of them. And I don't immediately recall other than looking at the entire sign code, um, to see if it's compatible. Or, but I don't remember. And then aluminum, lumens, if that's too much or too little, how to maybe adjust or control for that. But I don't remember anything else as far as it should be a conditionally used permit or should be something else. No.
Jumping back to the, uh, C1 piece, is there any, was there any discussion or recommendation on the colors of lights? As the, the picture, it obviously shows a white-ish light, but, um, is there any standard or is that something, as Lizzie mentioned, there's little details that you kind of forget about. And I don't know that we're prepared for a red light district in Lexington.
Uh, but the point is taken that no, right? As it's currently written, there isn't anything that says it has to be a white light. As, um, the applicant is showing in their preferred design.
Right.
So I could not, I think in good conscience, say that there is a prohibition on red lights, green lights, yellow lights.
Right.
Unless it's specifically written in.
Is that, is that something that would, that there'd be an interest in doing? I mean, I, I.
In having a red light district? No.
In, uh, in, in having a
Restriction.
A restriction or guidelines on the lights permitted. Um, just you know, you can always expand them later if we decide we want red or blue or something, but.
Well, it will go through ARB. If it's in the C1, it'll go through ARB.
That's true. That's.
You may take care of that issue.
That, absolutely. Fortunately, I mean, that's a great point. I mean, if we were to allow this, that is a a, uh, guardrails that the city has. So I mean, we're not saying something that will open up the, the avalanche tomorrow. Well, ARB will do their thing. So I mean, I, I'm.
Well, I was gonna say.
Like I said, I would, I personally would like to move in the direction of, um, something being permissible. Uh, that's me personally. Um, and being pro-business to that effect for, for this property. And I'm glad they brought it forward because that this, this is something important to them.
Right. And arguably something important to the city who is a great partner in getting the hotel to where it is today. Without going back too far and, and the origins of it, um, I, I, I agree with you. I think the, um, a, a next step, if, if council wanted to move forward, uh, hearing your words and being, um, supportive of this business, wanted to embrace this language and, and move forward with the motion this evening, certainly able to. We also could kick it back to, to planning. So I'll ask for council's consideration in a minute. But when I think about the lighting and ARB, um, it, it occurs to me, I, I don't know that we have specific regulations on colors. So ARB would need some further guidance or to put some standards in of what colors may be permissible. But it's hard to anticipate what businesses may want to bring this forward as well. So.
I did like, uh, Marilyn's, uh, suggestion too about, you know, 20, there may be a difference between 24-hour a day business and a, you know, so I don't know if that could be looked at along with the, uh, color scheme as well.
Yeah. The, these are some, well, issues to address. Arnie, go ahead.
I would recommend that if you have a preference for only white light, that you put that in here. So somebody doesn't come with an application with red lights or some other colored light. And then the ARB is put in that situation, the guidance would be appreciated.
Yep.
I, I would suggest that as well. Um, the ARBs, they, you know, determine colors for buildings and for window trims and all of that. So I would imagine that being conservative in terms of that being a historic district, that they would want to limit, you know, what the, the colors are.
Yeah. Yeah, they, and they operate with the palettes of colors that they have available to them. So. Any other questions from council for staff? If not, love to hear from the applicant. Perhaps to respond to some of the things you've heard and any questions that council may have.
Good evening. Lee Taylor here on behalf of Frankie, Frankie Benicasa and the owner of the Gin Hotel. And I'm certainly happy to make a brief presentation, but I think Mr. Glazer has already done an excellent job of that. I will be glad to address some of the specific questions that council members have uh, have brought up and certainly Mr. Benicasa and the other owners of the Gin Hotel have considered much of this. And first off, what I would like to point out is the the rendering which is on, and I'm not sure which page it is of your package, but the rendering that shows the old historical Robert E. Lee sign that was internally illuminated inside the canopy. And then the new proposed sign on the top is a rendering from about two years ago. The, and this sign would be greater than five square feet. In fact, now the proposed size, which is included in the, the text amendment, would render the sign that would be permitted about the size of the letters which are shown for the Robert E. Lee. So these were, I think those were about 14 or 18 inches tall. The ones now are, uh, I believe eight or 10 inches tall. So it's a much smaller uh, sign than is actually shown in the rendering here. So this is not accurate to scale.
Right.
Secondly, as far as the lumens are concerned, obviously it does not need to be an extremely bright sign. Mr. Glazer's indicated that uh, he doesn't have a way of regulating that, but certain, or measuring that, but certainly it could be done. And uh, with the modern sign technology, LED signs can be very easily adjusted. And this sign has not been completely designed because it's not permitted currently. So uh, if there are standards which are established, the sign, once we come up with a, with a, a, a drawing that we think will work and would be acceptable, would be presented through a sign application and of course would comply with whatever, uh, whatever the ordinance proposed at that point. The size of the building, uh, there was a question about the the, the size of the building and, and certainly we did consider that. But as Mr. Glazer indicated, it's, it is a relatively narrow storefront for such a large building because there are other businesses on the street level. And we have shared the permitted size of the sign for the building among the separate businesses. So it's and as it stands right now, the only signage for the hotel other than, as Mr. Glazer indicated, the word hotel on the side of the canopy. All right. You can barely see it, but there's a little square, a dark square that is a, a bronze plaque that just says the Gin Hotel. That's the only, and it's about, about this big. That's the only sign that the hotel has at this point. And that's obviously the reason that we need some effective signage for the customers, especially the ones that come in in the evenings. The as far as the, the lights, the color of light, certainly a white light is what we would request. And we think that is the most tasteful type of sign. And certainly one that would be historically accurate for the, uh, the hotel. We have a number of photographs. And in fact, uh, all of the, the signs from, I think the, the hotel was actually constructed in, in about the 1920s, if I'm not mistaken. So they were all neon signs. So, um, and, and we don't think neon signs are actually appropriate, but but all of the old signs for the hotel were neon signs hanging out there on a, on a, a, a big hanging sign out over the sidewalk. So any of that. I appreciate very much your consideration. We'll be glad to answer any specific questions that any council member might have.
I'll ask. Would, would it be problematic to, to limit the hours, say, sign off after midnight, one o'clock?
I wouldn't think so. Most, most of the guests are going to be arriving, you know, in the early evening hours. Very rarely would you get a, a guest that would come in after midnight. I, I would think that.
Right. It definitely happens. Yeah.
So, you know, midnight might be a little early.
Right.
Probably, you know, I'm not sure after midnight, midnight that it makes much difference. Most other folks are already in bed asleep by that point, but, um, so whether it be one o'clock or two o'clock, I'm not sure it would make much difference, but but certainly, uh, the owners would comply with whatever the, uh, the council felt was appropriate.
And, and so you were saying you did not request the five square feet. Ideally, what size sign would
Well, the, in fact, this, if my middle school math is accurate, I calculated the sign that was proposed at about, I think it was 3.85 square feet. So the sign that had been originally proposed was, I've got the old measurements, I think it was 18 by 76. And I have not calculated.
Okay, that's fine. That's good.
That, but we'd be happy to do it. But it was probably about twice the, the size that's being requested now.
And do you know, can these signs be adjusted, the brightness on them or?
I'm quite sure. Uh, LED signs are imminently adjustable and you can probably do it on your phone.
Yeah, right.
Are there questions for the applicant? Very good. Lee, thanks for being with us. Arnie, can I grab you back for just a second? I had one question I didn't ask. Not to confuse things, but um, in looking at the Nico sign, do you know what size that sign is and the letters and the square footage?
No, that wasn't during my time as just far as an approval. So I'm not sure we would have that in our files.
Okay.
You could certainly go out and take a measurement if you like.
That, that's okay. Just one of the things I'm struggling with is trying to visualize, you know, 10 inches and is, um, yeah. Also having the middle school math instead of an engineer who can do the quick math for us hopefully. If you have six letters that are no larger than 10 inches, how quickly you use up your five square feet or what that looks like. So that's, that's part of, that's the challenge that I'm having in looking at uh, what we're, what's proposed. If it's what the applicant wants and will help them be successful, uh, I'm of like mind with Councilman Ziegler, I, I want to help to affect that. But um, I don't know what I don't know from that standpoint.
I had a quick question. Um, in either the ARB meeting or the Planning Commission meeting, were there any comments from the public for or against this that you recall?
Do not recall that. Public comment for ARB, none. Public comment for Plan Commission, none.
Oh, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Arnie. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic. Not seeing anyone or hearing anyone. I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:53 and ask for council's thoughtful consideration.
I'll agree with David. I think the sign looks great. I don't have a problem with these type of signs downtown. I really would like to have Planning Commission take one more pass at it and look at some of the details, some of the concerns they had about, you know, hours of operation, making sure that it's adjustable, that the Director of Planning has some control over the brightness if it ever becomes an issue with, with uh, any of the neighbors or anything like that. But I think overall, I think it's a worthwhile amendment.
Very good. Well, I'll, um, offer for council regarding six dot one. That City Council refer this item solely to the Planning Commission for additional review. This isn't to open up all of sign. This is just to focus on this question currently. The ambition is to support our historic downtown businesses and preserve our historic charm. I have confidence that the Planning Commission can further review this application and bring forward a recommendation for approval that will not degrade our historic downtown, but provide conditions that support and promote businesses' success. Uh, my hope is that planning will address this at their earliest opportunity with a goal to return it to City Council by our second meeting in September, which is September 18th, so that we can keep it moving. So that.
I think that sounds fine. You have to ask Arnie about the uh, timing if that's too tight. It's pretty tight.
Well, it, it's a goal.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a deadline. Yes. It, it's a due date, not a deadline, but uh, to keep us all focused and moving forward to help the uh, business to move forward with um, uh, proper guidance. So.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, uh, asked for a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Strong? Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Betts? Ms. Alexander? Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are continuing motion and uh, thank you for uh, having the gin available to House folks. And uh, look forward to making progress on this topic. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and move item 6.3 next so that we can address the transient occupancy tax question and um, embrace an earlier evening for uh, Ms. Roundy. So with that, unless there's an objection, I dare you, um, Arnie. Um, or Tom, if you want to run with this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some of the comments I'll, I'll make to explain this issue before you this evening are embedded in the memorandum, but just to get, get them out for uh, purposes of conversation. The ordinance before you tonight uh, contemplates 1% transient occupancy tax. Uh, we had this same 1% transient occupancy tax up until June 30th. A little bit of history, uh, the City Council since 2016 has had this 1% occupancy tax uh, in support of the Virginia Horse Center. Uh, and 1% of occupancy tax in Lexington raises about in, in the last three calendar year, last fiscal years, about $100,000. So 1% equals $100,000 for purposes of this conversation. Uh, the city used 61,000 of that 1% to support promissory note that Virginia Horse Center had uh, at Cornerstone Bank. That, that note has been satisfied and there's no, no relationship with Cornerstone Bank for, for related to the transient occupancy tax. Um, we found out about their, their, the Horse Center's intention to pay off this note uh, on June 30th. And so uh, we, we have only had one month where, uh, to, to react to, to this um, change. So um, we think that the city should continue to have this 1% occupancy tax, although it's no longer associated with Virginia Horse Center. Um, and so in the memorandum, we detail uh, the, the overall hotel rate of taxation for somebody who comes and stays in a room. Yeah. Up until uh, recently, it was um, 13.3%, which includes a 5.3% sales tax and an 8% total occupancy tax, 1% of which was dedicated to the Virginia Horse Center that, that I was just referring to. Since they paid off the, uh, since the Horse Center paid off their, their note, the transient occupancy tax uh, under the legislation automatically drops down from 8% to 7%. We think this ordinance contemplates uh, that 8% should stay in place and, and this would reimpose that additional one cent, uh, 1% of, of transient occupancy tax. Uh, and in the, in the memorandum, we lay out several different options, including one, which is to, to, to let the tax expire and, and, and understand that that would be a fiscal impact to the general fund. Uh, it would have a benefit to reducing the rate of taxation for people staying in our hotels. Uh, what we're recommending though, is that we take this one cent that was formerly 1% that was formerly pledged to the Virginia Horse Center and we commit that to Main Street Lexington, our partner uh, in economic development within the, the Central Business District. Um, again, the numbers are, are very similar. Uh, 1% occupancy tax raises around $100,000 a year. City of Lexington has, over the last two fiscal years, supported Main Street Lexington to the amount of 96,000. So 1% occupancy tax would, would increase the amount of city support for Main Street Lexington if it's a 1% occupancy tax that raises 100,000 by a modest $4,000. Uh, I, I should say that it's possible, as you can see in some of the historic data in the years during and right after COVID, uh, the occupancy tax 1% did not raise 96,000. So it's my recommendation and I think Main Street feels very strongly about this as well, that we never fall below 96,000 in terms of support. That we pledge 1% and it, it's either 96,000 dollars of support or whatever one cent raises. This does allow us to have an opportunity to revisit our agreement with Main Street, make sure that all those objectives and goals are shared. And, and so that is uh, staff's recommendation, but there are several other options that are laid out in the memorandum. I'd be happy to entertain any questions about this. Uh, the fiscal impact to this ranges from losing 39 or $40,000 to the general fund to, to raising an additional 61,000. I should say, um, and, and this is important to point out from the memorandum that um, even though we're only one month into the fiscal year, the Finance Director and I are looking for ways to re-manage our expenditures because we do see some storm clouds on the fiscal horizon. And we, we are trying to manage those through reductions in expenditures. So this, you know, any, any solution that, that is at least fiscally neutral, if not beneficial to the general fund, uh, helps us in that endeavor to make, uh, to make our budget. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If we went with option two, couldn't we just budget for $100,000 to go to Main Street Lexington and, and each year at, within, you know, unless there's some kind of change or something like that, just put it in the budget?
Yes, you could, you could do that. They don't have to be connected to each other.
Yeah. Thanks.
And just to split hairs, what I heard the intent is that uh, contribution to Main Street Lexington would be 96,000 or 1%, whichever is greater. Other questions for the city manager?
Wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, there, there were some changes to this ordinance. I've been informed to some changes in state law dealing with Airbnb and VRBO and the like. So that, that's a, a large portion of the edits. If you had a chance to see the red line we prepared, and I'm not sure that you have, but there were a lot of edits associated with that. And then there was a model ordinance that was circulating to deal with some of those accommodations intermediary issues. That's what they refer to the Airbnbs as. That, that had uh, some provisions that dealt with some exemptions and dealt with some uh, some increased penalties to assist with collection. So those are also reflected in the ordinance as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions to the attorney? And to confirm, I don't think we've seen the red line document. Very good. Uh, staff report, uh, this time I'd like to uh, open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue. Mr. Alligood? It is a comfortable place. Oh, careful now. You can just ta- talk to us from there if you want.
Uh, okay. Let me just stay here.
The, I think on the way presented here, but the question is really a question about. So currently, Main Street Lexington already proceeds a building allocation. So the question is, is this an additional allocation or replaces gas in the overall total allocation in 100,000, not what they have plus. That's, that's the question.
Very good. Thanks, Ms. Alligood. Well. Very good. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council this evening on this topic? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing at 8:04 and ask for councils additional questions or in consideration.
I would be in favor of going with option two and then just funding Main Street Lexington, the additional amount. You know, that we need to each year in the budget.
And I will tell you, Nick, we, we prepared two ordinances, one that essentially was option two, and that was the one that was actually included in the first distributed packet and then they sent the second one out.
Right. Very good.
I do like the idea of having the, since, since this is a tax on tourists, that it be used towards tourism in some fashion. And I think sending it to Main Street makes sense. I think it also is a way of somewhat rewarding them for their good work when tourism picks up. Can't always point out it's exactly because of them, because a lot, but a lot of what they do certainly attracts tourism. So I would like to see it, see us as a council say that it's for Main Street and to Mr. Alligood's point that it would be in lieu of what we are currently giving them, not in addition to. And if it ever fell below like we saw during COVID, then we would deal with that separately to make sure that they're, they're not shortchanged if something drastic happened.
For budgeting purposes, to keep them whole and that this become a dedicated funding sources. The, the ambitions slash recommendation so that the funding would be the greater of 96,000 or 1%.
The reason why I like option two is I think it just provides for greater flexibility because we, you know, we don't necessarily like, for example, if we fell below, then we don't, for example, we don't know what tax will generate each year. And then if we budgeted each year for a given amount, then that gives us more clarity in the budget. And then also for some reason, uh, Main Street Lexington didn't need that amount of money. I'm not anticipating that, but let's say they didn't. It'll give us the flexibility to use it for others, some other tourism related purpose potentially. So I, the reason why I like option two is just, I think it provides greater flexibility, not that I don't want to fund Main Street Lexington.
I, I like the incentive. I mean, tourism certainly gets windfalls at times where, where they don't request money. They're provided more money than they sometimes ever expected. Gives them incentive to continue to work hard and work with the hotels, work with the restaurants, work with businesses. Main Street Lexington is a maturing organization. I like the fact that it gives us an opportunity to, to revisit the, the MOU, if you will. Not that there is a need to revisit it, but it's helpful to review and update occasionally. And it, and it would be helpful that in, in return for allocating the 1% to Main Street Lexington, we just, we brush up and refine what their responsibilities are back, whether they be fundraising or whatever it might be and what they provide for the city of Lexington and its businesses. So I'm comfortable with allocating the, using the language to allocate the 1%. It is something that, that they have been asking for, for years and years, looking longingly at the tourism contract. They envy it, as do a lot of organizations. And I think that it would be exciting to give them the incentive to continue to, to work toward filling our hotels and benefiting all of Lexington and its businesses.
And I think it gives them an opportunity to see the, the benefit, the, the results of their hard work. If they're working hard, they're going to see a lot more of that 1%. And it's not that they're the only contributor to that 1%, but it certainly helps them and gives them the incentive and the drive to meet their mission and their goals and to be more, more involved in what their goals are and to see the work that they do is rewarded in the amount of the tax revenue for their budget.
Now, this tax was originated for the Virginia Horse Center to support debt as they were had extreme capital needs and working their way out. I hear the voice of John Ellisstead in 2007 when he educated me on the concept of taxes get started generally for a purpose, and then rarely do they go away, even if the purpose goes away. But a question, has the horse center, they clearly have paid off the debt, but if they made any overtures or requests for this continuation of this to support their efforts or operations?
No, they have not.
Okay. I concur. The, the model that tourists, regional tourism has right now with bed tax being dedicated and sales tax being dedicated for their budget and operations, this is very analogous. So I think it's responsible and aligns well. I'm just also mindful that Main Street Lexington's model, as I recall, I think it was a third, a third, a third. So there'll still be challenges to Main Street Lexington to seek outside funding and fundraising as they continue to operate efficiently and effectively in support of our downtown. So just a couple of comments from the peanut gallery.
If we, if we did that option that, that sounds like the majority of council might want to go with. Is it in perpetuity or would, is it for a certain, it's?
Well, you are establishing it now, but you could amend the ordinance in the future if you wanted to remove it or change it.
So, but it stays like that until we.
Till you act again.
Okay.
Hi. I think giving the Main Street Lexington predictability is an advantage to the third option. While I appreciate what you were saying, Nick, about the flexibility of the general fund. Sometimes going into the general fund means every year, you don't quite know what's going to happen with that dedicated money. And in this way, it's pretty clear where it goes. And, and it's directly linked to, for all the other reasons council has said, terms of incentives and, and the economic engine that tourism brings through Main Street. So.
The connectivity of this plan just makes sense, you know, because of what, what Main Street does and where this funding source comes from. The connectivity just, it's like goes hand in hand.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance to amend and reenact chapter 366 taxation, article three levy and collection of taxes and lodging, sections 366 dash 17 through 366 dash 24 of the code of the city of Lexington.
Second.
Have a motion and a dueling second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Betts, Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Karen. Jeremy, thanks for being with us. You're welcome to stay. But you're also liberated to other endeavors if you choose. Thanks for your service. Next item on the agenda, six dot two, public hearing, consideration proposal to amend zoning ordinance, mini warehouses. Welcome, Arnie.
For your mini warehouse, I'm not going to rehash the ordinance proposal that's in front of you, other than to review your options. Option A is to follow the planning commission recommendation, which would be to no longer allow mini warehouses to remove that use from your matrix and therefore not being allowed to use anymore. Or option B, which is, I'm sorry, I'm reading from page 30, which is to add the use and design standards, a small amendment to the definition for mini warehouse, but also add that page and a half, if I remember correctly, of use and design standards to help sort of guide if we ever do get a request for a mini warehouse development, that we would have some design guidelines to go along with that. And then the other option, of course, is to deny this and leave it as is. And as is, is a condition where mini warehouses are conditionally approved or allowed in the C2 zoning district. And then there's a definition for that and then we'll just remain as is. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Members of council have any questions? Very good. Thank you. This time I'd like to open the public hearing on the topic of mini warehouses. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this topic? For or against? Not seeing anyone. I'll close the public hearing at 8:14 and ask for council's consideration.
I move to approves zoning ordinance amendment 2025-02 with the recommended use and design standards for the mini warehouse use, along with the recommended amendment to the mini warehouse definition.
Second.
A full throttle second there. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
So to be clear, it's the, that's, uh, we're, we're, we're going to allow it with the new recommendations. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
The, the standards. And I'll say thank you to council and also to planning for bringing this forward. Throughout the process a little bit, but I feel really good about supporting our property owners to be able to have an option for many warehouses and something that will be tasteful for entryways in the C2 district. And, and support our citizens and perhaps students with mini warehouse, as it may work for their geography. But I will ask for a roll call vote and Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And Arnie, thank you very much for all the work in getting us here and your, your patience. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is consideration of minutes from July 8 and 17. And unless there's an objection, we will approve those as presented. They are approved. Next is citizens remarks and comments. I'm not aware of anyone that signed up, but is there anyone who would like to speak to council on any topics this evening? Not seeing anyone. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There are three items there for your consideration. And would ask for your thoughtful consideration. Such as a motion.
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion in a second, roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Betts. Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I challenge anyone on council to join the, the trail run at Brushy Hill. It's a beautiful area out there. Not aware of any unfinished business, reports and commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority. I have no report and I spoke with Chuck Smith earlier and he said, Jeremy snuck out on us, but they had an annual retreat. They welcomed six new board members. I can't recall who they all are. But some of them are much younger than some of the others. But with the, the changes, it's a new board and they are refocused with their new executive director and very excited for the future and the vibrancy of our Main Street Lexington program. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
At the last planning commission meeting, they discussed the comprehensive plan review process and putting together a survey to send out to the communities, kind of like we did at the beginning of the whole comprehensive plan process. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for public input into the review of the plan.
Terrific. That's a five-year update that we're looking at.
Exactly, yes.
Terrific. Regional tourism board, Mr. Betts.
So strategic planning, the survey, which is related to helping to shape the future of tourism in our region was extended to remain open until August 20th, 2025. There were hundreds of responses to the survey so far. However, if you have not yet responded, Lexington, Rockbridge and Buena Vista Regional Tourism would like you to consider participating in the survey so that we can better understand your point of view. If you'd like to participate and have not yet done so, the link to the survey is, I put it in my written report.
On our Facebook page.
So it's on the face, yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, August 20th. Okay, that's it.
That's all. Any questions for Mr. Betts? Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
Uh, we are about to kick off fall sports practices. That of course includes football, flag football, soccer and cheerleading. I've talked before about us introducing flag football to, to our local kids. Last year, we introduced flag football to the intro to the youngest. This year we've moved up and we've added it for our rookies. And so we actually have 19, we have 33 intro kids that want to play flag football and 19 of our rookies, which is just tremendous that we have, we, we thought there was a desire for that in our community and there is. And so that's numerous kids getting exposure to football, but not having to, you know, they're being tackled and so forth. In speaking about football, and I know this is a little inside baseball to cross our analogies here, but middle school football, which is offered by Rockbridge County and, and LDMS and Moore River Middle School combined. They let the LDMS kids come over to Moore River and play. That started last year, middle school football, and that's always been a dream of Raro, quite honestly, that that would be added to our local public schools offerings because it takes some pressure off of us because we've never known what to do with those really mature eighth graders that are 13 or 14 years old. So that's always been a dilemma. Well, middle school football has now shifted its offering to sixth and seventh graders. Last year it didn't include the sixth graders. And so that then means that the JV team is eighth and ninth graders and varsity can, and so on. So this is causing a little shift for Raro in our, in who will be signing up for our oldest leagues. Because Buena Vista does not yet have that middle school football. But all indications are that they are moving in the direction of adding it next year. They've, they've talked about it. They've basically said they'd like to do it. Obviously things can change, but that, that really just helps our kids locally and it will ultimately help our high schools. So I just kind of share that in case you hear anything, if there are people have questions, they can be directed toward me or of course our Raro staff. But that's a big deal that some folks like our chair, Joey Jones, has been working on for a long time. And I give Joey and a lot of others in the community, a lot of credit for helping to make that happen. So I want to uplift that. I also want to pivot and mention our Raro adventures programs, which is the hunter safety courses that I've talked about before. That is something that our executive director has pioneered. We will be offering a hunter safety course at the BV Fire Department, August 16th. And then there will actually be a tree stand safety workshop, September 6th at Glen Murray Park Picnic Shelter. So again, outdoor recreation involves everything, you know, in, in this area. And so to provide those opportunities for safety for those who hunt, I give a lot of credit to Chad Coffey. And also two of our Raro employees are certified DWR volunteers. That's Robert Snyder and Becca Stratton. They're certified DWR through the state volunteers. So this is just Raro trying to reach more and more people, and I think it's a positive thing. One big change for Raro is that we purchased software at the beginning of this fiscal year to improve the registration process. We obviously want people to do it online, but when they were doing it online, it was still bulky previously. We've purchased municipality software. It's called Civic Plus. It's known to the city of Lexington and Rockbridge County. I mean, it's, it's a module, if you will, that a lot of organizations will, will purchase. And Raro benefited greatly from a Washington Ali student this summer, a football player. His name is O'Keefe McKinney from Georgia. And through the community-based learning program, which we've, we're getting a lot of benefit from that here in the city. O'Keefe helped set that program up so that it will launch this fall for people that will be registering for the winter sports. So that's really exciting and we want to give credit where credit is due, that O'Keefe McKinney has, has helped do that. So really wanted to thank, thank him. And then I will wrap up. After the last meeting, Mary Ellen asked why I didn't give a good recap on the state baseball tournament. And so I now have a good one and she's not here, but I will still deliver it that we did have 17 teams participate. that we did have 17 teams participate. 14 of the 17 made Lexington their home for three or four nights in a row. Uh, three of the teams were able to commute. Rockbridge County, of course, was one of them and Stanton, and you get that. But 14 teams used hotel rooms and they averaged three to four nights. And they all mostly, there were about 13 rooms per team. So I mean, you start to do the math. I can't do it, middle school math earlier. Uh, but we feel that that was an awesome contribution to the city of Lexington. Uh, most of those families ate their meals out. We actually did a survey. That's how we got all of this data. The average family had eight meals at local restaurants over the course of those days. In total, we brought in about just over 13, maybe $14,000 in income from having the tournament. Our expenses will be a little over $10,000. But there will be, so there will be a small profit in the $3,000 to $4,000 range. The full-time staff that worked hours and hours and hours, they were able to be compensated with a little comp, comp, comp time afterwards to little enhance their summer vacation so that that, that profit will help benefit Raro in our budget. It's not a great profit, but we're really proud of what we provided the community and, and that we turned a profit. Because sometimes you put on these large events and you lose money on it. So we felt, we felt really good. We never did it for the profit, but that was a, that was a, a positive thing. So just wanted to give that final update, but next time Mary Ellen is here, I will, I will deliver it one-on-one to her because she, she was, uh, she had gone to the tournament, she said, and she had saw how successful it was and she wanted the recap. So there you go.
Good work. Good work. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ziegler?
Just a comment. Uh, it'll be interesting to see in addition to that $3,000 of profit, what the meals tax and the lodging tax look like to see how, you know, things may have, may have helped.
Let's hope there is a bump. Yeah.
Absolutely. Good, good stuff going on and beautiful weather. It worked out as well. So, and many thanks to 3WZ who broadcasted the games. So even if you weren't able to make it to Fox Field, able to catch the game online or on, on the radio. Uh, Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold met on July 23rd and focused on approving the agenda in minutes, electing a new chair and vice chair and discussing the homeowner helper program. Shadry Sands will continue as chair. Anna Crockett will continue as vice chair. Key points included the EDA's active role, the need for a memorandum of understanding between EDA and Threshold and the importance of legal reviews for the program's documents. Discussions covered the implications of homeowner defaults, the necessity of legal review for surviving spouses. And we are forwarding questions like these to our city attorney. And there were discussions that were covering of a scoring system for prioritizing home repairs, eligibility, lien requirements and expectations, detailing the application to ensure that we're asking the appropriate questions to glean the information we really need. The group agreed to meet again in August to finalize the application and scoring system. And we are well ahead of our implementation schedule, which begins in January. The meeting, uh, next meeting date is 8/27/25 at 4 o'clock PM. And as a reminder, Threshold still has one open seat on the board. And this is a three-year term and it has a term ending date of 6/30/26. And after that, that person could re-up for another three. Thank you.
Terrific. Any questions for Ms. Alexander? Excellent. Thank you. Threshold. Um, no particular order, a couple of items, primarily praise and thanks. Kappa Alpha Order had a conference that was based out of Roanoke, but I think it was last Friday. My days are running together, but last Friday had all their folks attending the conference come and shop and eat and experience downtown Lexington. Mother Nature was a little cranky early with a little rain, but I think everyone had a really good time. And the merchants that I talked to said that it had a significant impact on their otherwise quiet summer day of sales. So thankful to Kappa Alpha Order, their 81st conference, including Lexington. Uh, reminder that school begins next week. Yikes. Uh, and the community festival is shortly thereafter. I'm sure Chuck will give us an update on that at the next meeting. A big thank you to Tracy Lyons and the Chamber. The State Chamber Director Kathy Vick came and sought input and shared some meaningful thoughts with the direction of the State Chamber. She's a new executive director. The previous one had been there many, many years. So new blood, new ambition and a real dynamite person. If you get the chance to interact or deal with her, highly recommend it. She is, uh, uh, high energy and very, very capable. And as my way of update, the Sister City Committee has been meeting actively, have added some new folks to their committee and are still working diligently in finding and vetting their next steps. I anticipate they will be coming back to us certainly sometime this fall with an update of their progress and, and their ambitions and what direction they'll be going. Um, and lastly, as a point of personal privilege, wanted to publicly express my appreciation for Chief Green and her tenure here. Uh, thankful that Lexington was a part of her journey and would offer her best wishes in the next phase, next steps of her journey as she goes to the AG's office in Richmond. Um, unless you have any questions, I will bounce pass it to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I wanted to echo the mayor's comments and, and thank and recognize Chief Angela Green for her four years of service to Lexington and the Lexington Police Department. Like the mayor, I wish her all the best in her new role with the Attorney General's Office. Council is aware that I've announced and designated Detective Sergeant Jessica Burks is our acting chief until such time as, as I appoint an interim chief and we begin the recruitment process for Chief Green's replacement. I'll be settling, setting a couple of dates in the near future for inviting community input in what the selection process should look like. Uh, I'll announce those dates pretty soon. They, they should be in the month of August. The intention is to get moving forward on the recruitment process immediately so that we can fill that position and, and create additional stability within the Lexington Police Department. Uh, so look for those announcements in the near future. Second, Kate Beard, the clerk of council, is organizing, helping to organize a joint work session in the second half of September with city council and the Economic Development Authority. Once we have those dates specified, we'll be preparing some materials for both council and the EDA's review. I will be looking to have one-on-one or one-on-two meetings with council members prior to the, the meeting in September to, to have some, some discussion about how, what role, if any, the EDA could play in redevelopment roles for the spots wood in the VDOT properties. So I'll be reaching out to you or Kate will be as well to, to look to find a convenient time for small group discussions about what that could look like here in the next, say, four weeks. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none. City attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last meeting, I mentioned there may, might be two more opioid settlements coming forward. Uh, and, and I will give you a quick update on those two and, and may propose a motion if you're so inclined. The first is the Purdue and Sackler family settlement. That's a rising out of the Purdue bankruptcy. So part of the acceptance or approval of the settlement will have to be of losing the, or disbanding the bankruptcy plan. Again, we'll, all this will happen through outside council who we have retained. The, um, the, the money for Virginia out of that settlement is approximately 39 million. It's to be paid out over 12, 15 years, I believe. So Lexington will get $36,000, $37,000 out of it. But again, that will be paid out over 10, 12, 15 years. I'm not entirely certain. I know the, the payout on the settlement is 15 years, but it might not be equal. There might be some upfront and then some spread out over time. Um, so as part of that, that settlement, I would ask if city council is so inclined for, uh, for a motion to accept the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and approve the city of Lexington's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family and directing the city attorney and outside council to execute documents necessary to effectuate the participation in the settlement, including the required release of claims against the Sackler family and acceptance of the bankruptcy plan for Purdue Pharma. Somebody would.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to suggest.
Uh, any questions about that? Um, obviously we're participating in the national settlement and it is, uh, as, as good as we're going to do under the circumstances.
Uh, thank you for bringing that forward. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Betts, Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Ms. Strong, Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and thank you for bringing that forward.
Oh, you're welcome. And one more.
Please.
Um, the, the second settlement had to do with eight manufacturers of opioids. Alvegen, Amneal, Apitex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun and Zitus, all pharmaceutical companies. Smaller settlement, this one is, but not as small as the last one. This one is $16.4 million will be coming into Virginia. And so Lexington will receive about $15,000 out of that settlement. The, um, this one of, of the largest chunk will be paid up immediately. So there, there could actually be some, some money in the near term from that settlement. A couple of those manufacturers are paying out over time, but five of the eight are, are paying immediately. So hopefully that means there'll be some, some money sooner rather than later. Uh, if council is, um, is so inclined, I would request a motion to approve the city's participation in the proposed settlements of opioid-related claims against the eight manufacturers I just named and their related corporate entities and directing the, the city attorney and the city's outside council to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlements, including required releases of claims against those eight manufacturers.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Ms. Strong, Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Betts, Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for bringing those forward. Wish those were circumstances that weren't even in our realm, but here we are. And thank you for, uh, bird dogging those.
Nothing further for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I don't know if you got, uh, the threshold questions at all yet.
I have not.
Okay. Uh, just a, two of the, two of the things that kind of came up just were, um, for, uh, a non-spouse, uh, that, a non-spouse on the title, essentially, like, for example, I don't want to take too long on this, but, uh, real quick, one of the things was, um, if, if one spouse owns the property, should you basically have the other spouse sign anything? And then the other legal question, uh, was related to essentially, it's a kind of a mesh of a legal and policy question, surviving spouse, um, that is not on the title. So they're basically like, when you have one spouse on the title and the other spouse is on the title for estate planning, and the other one was probably kind of related to like divorce and such.
Well, I'm going to try to limit my malpractice, so I'm not going to talk about estate planning. But, uh, that would have to go to somebody else. I can find somebody, but I'm not the estate planning attorney, so.
Just trying to give you a heads up on what's.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, we can, we can definitely figure that out, but I don't recall off the top of my head.
Not, not asking you to provide an answer right now, just telling you some of them may be.
A, a question that Threshold needs addressed at some time.
Yes, yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions of the city attorney? Very good. Under New Business, consideration of a resolution naming representatives of the Oak Grove Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund. Uh, as you well know, we have a fund that is managed by Truist Bank. And the city manager and finance director, historically, the contacts as provided in your packet, uh, looking to eliminate Jim Halas as a trustee or contact and add Tom Carroll as authorized representative. And ask for your consideration.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-10, a resolution of the Lexington City Council naming authorized representatives of the Oak Grove Perpetual Care Trust Fund to include Tom Carroll.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Uh, the only other item on our agenda besides adjournment is a closed session. And we'll report to folks, we are, um, it's for the purpose of addressing personnel matters. And I do not anticipate that we will be taking any action after we come out of closed session. But grateful for everyone who's here this evening. And if you have nothing going on this evening, encourage you to travel to Lewisburg, West Virginia for the 100th celebration of the West Virginia State Fair. I'll, I'll be there and glad to host you, so. But with that, I'll ask Ms. Alexander to read us into a closed session.
I move that the city council of the city of Lexington convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider matters related to personnel and the appointment of an interim police chief.
Second.
That you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the second. Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Strong. Uh, Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman. Thank you, sir.